Chris, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council will go ahead and call the media order for the record. It is February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three at four thirty P M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Zimison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion a second to adopt the agenda. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next item up is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we would go into department commission reports. And itemated is recognition of long-term employees of the city of Meridian. So council, just a brief update, as we've continued to evaluate our recognition of city employees. This is one of the new changes we've done rather than just doing it in front of the department. We decided to ask the employees to come here and be recognized in front of city council. And in some cases with their families present as well, and it'll be on record forever. So we're here today to do recognition of two long-term employees, both with thirty years of time with the city. So I'm going to move down to the podium, and let's start off by asking Mr. Freckleton to join me at the podium. He's going to have his family come up and join as well. And so unfortunately, got a little bio of information that's been provided by Human Resources. So thank you very much to Human Resources team for helping us in this process. So I'm going to go ahead and read and we'll do a little recognition if you have any words you'd like to say. We would love to hear from you. We are excited to celebrate Bruce Freckleton's thirty years of service with the city of Meridian. During his time at the city, he spent several years working at Meridian's Development and Services Manager, focused on the overall administration and management of all land development and building activities within the city. During his time as the Development Services Manager, Bruce led the transition away from a contracted services model of building plan review and inspection services to an in-house model. This transition has proven to be a significant benefit for the city and the customers we serve. Over the course of his thirty-year career with the city, Bruce has led the Development Services Divisions through the greatest periods of growth of the city and continues to do so as the Community Development Director, which he was promoted to in two thousand and twenty-one. Bruce was born and raised in Boise. However, nineteen eighty-five, he Meridian is where he and his wife Connie decided to set their roots and raise her three children. He is proud to call Meridian home. Through the years, he has developed excellent working relationships with design consultants, developers, builders, city administrators, and other governmental agencies. He looks forward to applying his years of experience and perspective to all aspects of community development each and every day. Bruce has vast experiences, built strong relationships. He has committed to Meridian's vision, being a premier community to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you for your dedication to the city, and congratulations on your thirty years of service, Bruce. It's been a pleasure for me to be here for half of those roughly. But it's 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 an honor. So congratulations. And here's some stuff from the Human Resources Department, which always includes, you know, some chocolates and your thirty years of recognition from the city of Meridian. So I'll hold on to these for a second if you have any comments you'd like to make.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an absolute honor serving the citizens of Meridian. Time flies so fast. It just doesn't seem like it's been thirty years, and Kenny can probably agree with that, too. But it has been an honor and a privilege to to work for the city and look forward to finishing out my career here. So thank you very much.
Mr. Bowers. So I had to start with the one with the few years total accumulated service, and it was very nice, Bruce, to bring one of his grandkids who, you know, it's about when you started officially with the city, it was about the same timeframe based upon your years of service. So appreciate that. Kenny Bowers is a lifelong Meridian resident, and for a lot of that time has been helping the city of Meridian. Kenny began his career as a volunteer firefighter and police officer in the city around nineteen seventy-two. In late nineteen eighty-three, he was appointed to become Meridian Fire Sixth Fire Chief. He served in a part-time capacity until nineteen ninety-two, when the fire chief position was transitioned to full-time. Then he helped build out the initial infrastructure of Meridian's fire command staff. During this time, Meridian Fire Department expanded, building three new fire stations, bringing three new apparatuses to the city. Kenny was instrumental in starting the thermal imaging program, the defibrillator program, and establishing Meridian Fire's first fire safety center, which opened in two thousand and five. Meridian Fire also began its partnership with Ada County paramedics, co-locating the ambulance at Meridian Fire Station Number Two in order to improve response times to that area of the city. Then he stepped back from his role as fire chief in two thousand and five, eventually moving to the position of fire inspector, and most currently captain fire inspector. He is well-known for never missing a single day of work and continues to be a valuable asset to the Meridian Fire Department. Very few employees make it to twenty years of service, let alone fifty. We are excited to celebrate Kenny's thirtieth official work anniversary and fifty years of community involvement with the city of Meridian. Kenny has been married to his wife Christie for thirty-six years. It is obvious that when Kenny makes a commitment, he sticks with it. Congratulations and thank you for all of your services, City Meridian and our community, Kenny.
Thank you. My wife wasn't able to make it. She was doing four-eight stuff at Emmett tonight with the kids, so that's kind of important. So back there in the back row, back here, that's my family back there. We grew up with those guys, worked with them. It's been a ball. I mean, thirty years full-time and twenty years part-time and and man, John Overton and and these guys, it's quite a difference here when we started. From I had a little office in the fire station in a corner with a table, card table. And every time, you know, a fire truck would start, I'd get dieselled out, stinked out. But we've changed a lot. Coming up from the volunteers to full-time and bringing in more building more stations and more engines and and stuff, it's it's been a thrill to work with the city of Meridian and then the Meridian Rural Fire District as a couple. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And council, the best part is either one of them is going anywhere anytime soon to my knowledge. So look forward, maybe we can get him up here for thirty-five years before too long. With that, we'll move on to item number nine, which is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council update. I'm gonna invite a hand to come forward and introduce our MIACers who will be presenting this evening. Sand?
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you so much for allotting this time for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council to come up and speak to you. I'm actually going to invite Caitlin and Isabella, our MIAC representatives today, to come up and introduce themselves, and they'll provide a little bit of an update on what MIAC has been up to over the past few months.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for having us today. My name is Isabella Duckelman. I'm a junior at Renaissance High School, and I'm currently serving as the Community Service Vice Chair for MIAC.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Caitlin Holdman, and I am a junior at Compass Public Charter School, and I'm currently the Vice Chair of MIAC.
All right. So for our presentation, we wanted to give you guys a brief overview of what MIAC has been doing between the months of November and February. So, beginning with government affairs.
So our first government affairs activity was our city hall tour. This was December fifth. And we as MIAC had the opportunity to tour Meridian City Hall and hear from a representative from every department and city hall. And we really got to learn a lot more about city government and how everyone functioned and worked together. And then January thirty-first, we had the legislative reception with the American Heart Association. So we had MIACers help put together a map showing the location of stores that sell tobacco, nicotine, and vape products, as well as locations of schools to show how the school's locations and those shops' locations were in proximity or close to each other. And then we had some MIACers go to the Capitol with the American Heart Association to speak with legislators and state officials about their perspectives on the use of these substances. And then most recently, this was last Friday, we had our tour of the state Capitol. And this was about an hour-long tour where we went on every four and got to learn more about how the Idaho State Government functions.
And then for some of our community service events that we've had, we did trunk-or-treat in October. So MIAC had a booth at this event, and members handed out candy to little kids as part of a fun fishing game that has become part of a MIAC tradition. And then we also had holiday helper decorating, and this occurred over the span of three different days. So MIAC was in charge of making and putting up all the decorations in the Expo Idaho building for holiday helpers. So members helped made snowflakes, set up a Christmas tree, and hung up fun festive posters. And then these are some pictures from that event. And we also participated in rake-up Meridian over two different days. So members participated in this event, which is a community event supporting seniors and others in need in our community. So members helped rake the yards and bagged leaves for two different houses. We also participated in the Winter Garden Glow Event, which is held by the Idaho Botanical Gardens. So members served as volunteers and guides. They were stationed throughout the garden, and they answered questions and guided attendees to neighboring areas. And then there's a fun picture from that event. Most recently, we had a nonprofit panel, and we also did Valentine's Day card decorations at our last meeting. So we invited Lisa Hansen from the Meridian Senior Center, Abishwals from the Disability Rights Idaho, and Adra Green from the Meridian Library District to inform members about community aid groups and what they do in their positions. And then afterwards, members made Valentine's Day cards for the Meridian Senior Center, which those are seen in the photo.
And then as far as leadership development, we recently had the guest speaker Nick Allinger, who is the CEO of IBL Events. And he talked to us about producing a live and studio event. From the presentation, we learned a lot about how to coordinate and present a live and studio event. And as far as leadership development, this helped us learn about the importance of communication, collaboration, and the coordination between everyone as a team needed to manage and create events.
And then for some other fun events MIAC has had, we had our holiday party in December. So to kind of commence the holidays, MIAC held a holiday party at city hall, and members played fun games such as minutes win it, dressed in ugly sweaters, and did a fun white elephant gift exchange. And then for some upcoming events that we have, in March, we invited the Urban Land Institute to go over a city development workshop. This was something that the Executive Council members did at our AIC conference, and we wanted to present this to the General Council members. So this event will include MIAC members using Legos to help plan a city where they're given certain regulations to learn more about what city planning entails.
And then also in March, we're going to have our bylaw overview, and we're going to try and update those with Deputy City Attorney Emily Kane. We haven't updated our bylaws in a while, and we've been working as an executive counsel to go over some proposed changes, and then we're going to talk to the General Counsel about those. And then we're also going to be planning for Do the Right, which is going to be happening in April, which is where we're going to sort of commence that event and promote it. And then we'll also have a city council panel where we'll learn from you guys and present that kind of to the general MIAC as a whole. And then finally, in May, we have the senior prom with the Meridian Senior Center. This is something we did last year, and it was a really fun event, and we got to provide a really fun night for senior citizens in our community. Thank you. Are there any questions that you guys might have?
Thank you, Caitlin and Isabella. Council questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. Wow, you all have been busy. This is fantastic. I love that you are getting involved in such a big variety of things and and the community service aspect is is really wonderful. I'm curious about your day with the legislators regarding tobacco use and what you were hoping to accomplish in your conversations with them, if it was just to make them have some awareness of the perspective of youth, or if there was something that you were actually wanting to get proposed or passed through the legislature and kind of how that conversation went.
Oh, so far, we aren't necessarily working to create a bill, but we are talking with the American Heart Association. And they were just talking about like wanting to do a project and the importance of kind of seeing the correlation between these locations and schools.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow. Caitlin and Isabella weren't the MIACers who were present at the event, so I just wanted to provide a little bit of perspective from the ones who were there. They got to get sort of a a quick little training on lobbying from the American Heart Association, and it allowed them to learn a little bit about how tobacco cessation and tobacco education programming works in our state through the mechanism of the Millennium Fund. But really, what it was mostly about was giving them a chance to have these sort of conversations with the legislators where they were able to speak very frankly about their experiences with these products, seeing it among their friends or in their communities. Because legislators don't necessarily have the opportunity to get that sort of insight from the students. And I think the American Heart Association was very glad to have students with boots on the ground who could speak to that sort of experience.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you so much. That that's awesome. Just the experience of them going and being there and sharing their voice and sharing their perspective and being bold in that. I applaud that. Please pass that on to all of those that were there and participated, and that's just something that's, I'm, you know, so to get our youth involved in public service in that capacity is amazing. And I wanted to just say really quickly, I happened to do the ULI event last fall, and it's so much fun, and it's harder than it looks, but it is, it's, you guys are just kind of a blast. It's really, really awesome. So I'm sure you're gonna have a really good time with it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council, and the other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much for being here and sharing that, and best of luck as we continue moving through the rest of the year, and maybe there there may be something even with the Meridian Library District elections if they're if they pop, if there will be candidates running besides the one person, but we'll see. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with that, we will go to item ten, which is Meridian Solid Waste Advisory Commission Annual Update. And we are have Chairman Corey here with us this evening. Steve, nice to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Corey. I'm the chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. I bring you greetings and thanks, thanking you from the Solid Waste Advisory Commission for your support and things that you have worked with us on. One of the primary responsibilities of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission is managing the community recycling fund program. At present, the balance for the CRFP is just over eighty-two thousand dollars. SWAC had voted to go ahead and request from you permission to use about twenty-two hundred dollars for squishy water bottle project out at the Meridian Transfer Station, but Public Works went ahead and financed that this year, so we had no expenditures from the account in FY twenty-two. I would mention to you that we do have, I'll probably be in front of you fairly soon to go ahead and request permission to use some of the funding to go ahead and cover the squishy water bottle program over at the transfer station, and also we're going to need a little bit of help on the glass receipt over there, combined on the two, not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. So we know we're still going to have seventy thousand dollars in that account. Looking forward, I would say that Solid Waste Advisory Commission is very excited about having that available as this solid waste management plan gets put together to be able to have a little bit of financing to incentivize the suggestions that are in the plan, and we'll look forward to working with council on those projects once they get worked through, and we can give you some solid recommendations. Some of the activities over the course of two thousand and twenty-two are the Trash or Treasure project, the Public Works Expo, the Recycle a Bicycle project, working with the Ada County Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Ada County Hazardous Waste Program. Trash or Treasure, as you can, as you probably are well aware, is a beloved program for city citizens, something that's unique to Meridian. It really has transitioned well over into city staff, and they take care of all the publicity on this and a lot of the sign-ups and and other information. And at this point, this kind of drifting down to where our members watch what's going on out in the community and help report that back and provide pictures. Obviously, you know, these are a couple of shots of one location that shows in the morning what was put out on the curb, and even in the afternoon, what little was left, and another shot in the neighborhood of all that was left was the sign that said, these are part of Trash or Treasure. The treasure had already been taken off. We got the chance to participate in the Public Works Expo this year, and had a very enjoyable time with that. We had about seventy-five this year stopped by the booth. And as is kind of the common thread on these things, the citizens like to go ahead and talk about what's acceptable in the recycle stream and and usually have some questions about some of the other programs that can exist like glass subscription or grass or other activities. We were glad to be able to do the Recycle a Bicycle, or the yeah, Recycle a Bicycle project again this year. And again, staff really stepped up on this. A lot of press releases and a lot of information. We got some press in the local news stations and had a good deal of support on the day of the event. We had forty-six bicycles that were spoken for. And unfortunately, in the second photo, you can see some evidence of the rainstorm we had to deal with that day. But even so, thirty-four people arranged to pick up their bicycles. The remaining bicycles were eventually distributed to the rescue mission in Farmway, but certainly is a good project to go ahead and give some transportation options to members of our community. And I need to mention, too, that at the end of the year, the Recycle a Bicycle activity out at the transfer station provided another fifty bikes for youth to the Boise Bicycle Project, and those were some of the bicycles that they were able to go ahead and distribute. But this event is, this activity is really diverted a bunch of material from the landfill that goes to good use after it otherwise would have been hitting the end of its life. And the other activities that we mentioned, as far as the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for Ada County this year, I was asked to go ahead and pick up the chairmanship of that committee again. So if you ever have any things that you want our county committee to go ahead and look into, I really appreciate your requests. As far as what we're looking at, the landfill's coming to grips with the fact that while their original intention was for the landfill to last through the century, right now, the projection is that it'll only, it'll fill up by twenty sixty-five, which starts putting in the plans for the next landfill on the distant radar screen. And some of the effects of that have come back into financing, and that's really going to be the key items that we're going to be looking at over the course of this next year. And I'm certainly looking forward to making sure that you get the information that we get on that. As far as household hazardous waste, certainly the contractor that's working on this has had some issues. certainly the contractor that's working on this has had some issues with staffing and such. And so I suspect we're going to have to be watching that pair fairly close over the year or two. As far as our other major activity, the rate review, this year it was almost automatic, basically just the CPI inflation adjustment and and then continuing the outside agreements on waste process or recycled material processing. And as I've kind of indicated before in this, in that review, that both the glass subscription process and the grass subscription process grew a bit, but not significantly. And so at this point, we have no recommendations for any changes in those two programs. We had a number of pro presentations throughout the year, but rather than reading through all these, I'll boil them all down to monitoring waste and recycling in the community. The CRFP management outreach activities and monitoring the rates. And in the report, I've gone through a number of items, kind of specifying some of the activities that we're looking through out the year, but just to kind of hit the highlight, our intentions are just improving and protecting the city's waste and recycling practices and systems while being mindful of the ratepayers. And with that, I would love to have your questions.
Thank you, Steve. Council questions for Mr. Corey.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Hey, Corey, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. What is the timing of the solid waste plan? Is one question I have. And then what is it? You know, are you guys going to look at a voluntary composting program? Where is that at? I know there were some legal issues popping up and hurdles that got in our way of looking at that, but I'd love an update on those two items.
Thank you, Council, Councilman. Yes, I on those two issues, as far as the first one, the solid waste plan, certainly that's within staff. And I think it's more appropriate that staff go ahead and address that issue. I'm going to go ahead and let Seer go ahead.
Hi, Sarah Schultz, City always coordinator. So yes, we are currently finished with the plan, the first draft. And right now, the director is looking at that. So we're hoping to get that wrapped up in a couple of months and then presented to to the mayor and the council. So that, so the the solid waste draft or solid waste plan is written by the staff members, not the SPAC. And then after that goes through, then SWAC will have a chance to to look at it as well.
Okay, thanks. And then the looking at composting, is that addressed in the plan or are you guys going to look at that again anytime soon?
Let me go ahead and say that we continuously look at the the activity. And so, yeah, you're going to need both of those discussed on this. I think probably I'll start off and let's hear talk about composting, well, and organic waste in the waste management plan.
Yeah, so that's something that we look at in the plan and that's addressed there. There's different, there's just more expanded yard debris that we currently have in the grass program. And then also would look at feasibility of having a full compost program, which means yard debris and food scraps. So that's something that will be evaluated once the plan is put into place through staff.
Got it.
But then to continue on that, you're indeed correct on this, that we've been monitoring the availability of composting services being developed by the by the private sector. And that continues to develop at this particular point, but our other key input is this subscription services to see if that grass that's being currently collected to go ahead and compost. If that jumps up with a significant amount of community interest, then obviously we would, that would be a trigger for us too. So like I say, once we've got on record the amount of of organic material that's being developed by the city and some of the options that can be done with it, then we can work with in our group to figure out the recommendations and it will be before council at that point to recommend changes if they're appropriate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. I mean, there you know, are a couple of companies, obviously, in the Treasure Valley that are expanding or looking at composting. And I just feel that the grass offering is not indicative of what the demand would be for a voluntary organic waste composting program. It's just so limited, you know, compared to what people could actually compost, I think, from their household. So I appreciate you guys continuously evaluating it and look forward to reading the the plan once it's all finished up and reviewed by SWAC. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Mr. Mayor, Steve, you'd mentioned household hazardous waste contractor and staffing issues, which is not unusual, unusual at this time, a lot of businesses. But are they still able to provide regular service for our household hazardous waste program? Yes, it still continues to be the case that on Monday afternoons from eleven to six, eleven to six, people that go to the Meridian Transfer Station on Franklin are able to go ahead and get rid of their household hazardous waste, any chemicals that have expired their self shelf life, any excess materials and such. So yes, we haven't had a, a, an issue with level of service per se at this particular point. But it is something that is, has hit our radar screen and we feel like it needs to be watched closely. Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Yeah, that's, that's an important program, keeping those types of products out of our waste stream and handling properly. So yeah, that's something definitely keep an eye on that and let us know if there's anything we need to do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Pearl.
Thank you so much for that update. I'm just curious about what you said about the planning, the financial planning for expansion of the landfill many years from now. Is there an anticipation that it will continue to physically expand in its current location or that they might add another location in Ada County?
The landfill has expressed the point that they definitely have to be making commitments twenty years in advance. So that brings, walks it back to twenty forty five, a lot of design efforts, land acquisition, numerous other activities that are associated with it. Of course, even before you do those type of activities, they need to do some preparatory work. So the, we expect to be hearing quite a bit in the near future about their plans for this activity. But particularly with the transition of management, a year and a half ago, when they picked up our, our employee, Tom Audi up there. They have had a laser focus on doing anything they can to reverse the trend and try to extend the length of the land, the life of the landfill. So we're hoping that some projects will be put together either at the landfill or within the community that might give people opportunities to divert even more material so that we don't end up, we can postpone that time when we might be tasking the taxpayers of the time, which would be our grandkids or kids, you know, that we don't want to see that tax increase any sooner than it has to be occurring.
Council, additional questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, Steve. We do look forward to seeing those things come forward. So best to you and the staff on continue to advance these priorities.
Thank you very much.
All right, as we see our CFO start to stand up and item eleven is Finance Department Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Two Budget to Actual Results. Mr. Lavoy, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And appreciate you giving us an opportunity to provide you an an update on the fiscal year twenty twenty two financial results. So as a reminder, fiscal year twenty twenty two ended on nine thirty, nine thirty twenty twenty two for the twelve months preceding that. I'm going to present to you today the results of the actual financials. And a note to you, our audit is started today. So our auditor showed up to audit these numbers. So I'm presenting to you unaudited figures. But again, we're confident that the numbers won't change dramatically. So the numbers that you see here are unaudited numbers at the moment. But again, our auditors did show up today and we should have an audit report in front of you in about thirty days. So today, what we're going to go over is the fiscal year twenty two financial results. I'll also explain to you what the results of the fund balances were for the general fund and the enterprise fund. By ordinance, I need to submit to you a separate report for the impact fee. So this adheres to that or that meets that requirement. So I'll give you the results of the impact fee fund itself. And then I'll give you a glimpse of what you'll receive from me on the next quarterly report. And then stand for any questions, but anytime, please interrupt me if you have questions on any topics or any items that you want to discuss. What I will do first is I'll go through the general fund. And then I'll go to the general fund fund balance and then we'll talk about the enterprise fund. Talk about the enterprise fund balance and then we'll go to the impact fee fund. So the first fund that we'll start off with is our first major fund, which is the general fund. And we finished the fiscal year for fiscal twenty two for the general fund. Total revenues, so I'm going to go revenues first, then we'll do expenses second. So we finished the year twelve percent higher. So our budget was off by twelve percent on the good side. So the results were twelve percent higher than we expected for fiscal year twenty twenty two. And you can see that the largest difference of, you know, if we missed a, from a target perspective, was in the license and permits, which ended up at sixty nine point five percent higher than we expected. That represents the permits that you approve throughout the fiscal year. And for fiscal year twenty two, you approved three hundred and thirty one more multifamily permits than we had projected. So hence why it's higher than our numbers. And then you actually approved the highest amount of commercial square foot we've ever approved in a calendar year fiscal year. So again, we did not project a pinnacle of revenue expectations in commercial, hence why we missed the target by sixty nine percent. So again, it's on the good side, but again, the the reason why we missed it by sixty nine was our conservative numbers were outpaced by your approvals, which is fine. But that's why you see us missing the target by sixty nine percent on the community development side. And then the second largest item that you'll see, we missed the target by was these intergovernmental, we missed intergovernmental by thirty three percent. And that's because of the sales tax revenue exceeded our expectation. So when we built this budget twenty months ago, we were still in that COVID concern. We, so we were super conservative on the sales tax revenue projections. And Idaho, as you've heard and seen and know, has been very strong and healthy over the past twelve months and eighteen months. We have adjusted our sales tax revenue projections based on the new actuals. So for twenty three and twenty four, you'll see our, hopefully, will be have a, we'll have a better performance when we report back to you in twelve months on twenty three and twenty four. And then the most important revenue source that we have in the general fund is property tax. As you can see, it's by far the largest of all the revenue sources, even combined, all the other ones don't meet it. And we missed it by one percent. We're super happy with the one percent. Our average is about one to two percent. We missed that target number by. So again, we missed it by one percent. And that is the most important one we have. So we try to make sure that one is as close to a hundred percent as possible. And then the last item that we'll talk about a little bit later is what do we got is going to be the impact fees, but I'll present the impact fees at the end of the presentation. So again, at the end of the day, our general fund, we missed the target by twelve percent, but on the good side. And hopefully that explains kind of what we did there. For fiscal twenty four budget, I'm just going to touch on that. We're working on that now with you. So if you have questions about fiscal twenty four revenue projections, I'd love to discuss that in a separate meeting if possible. I'm happy to go through and present to you and anything. If you have any questions like, how do we project these revenue sources? I'm happy to give a one on one class. You can stop by our office anytime to discuss revenue projections. That's what we're here for. So that is revenue in a nutshell for the general fund.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Councilor Schrader.
Hey, Todd. Yeah, you know what I'd like to get is a ten year look back of the general fund and our actual revenue versus the budget. That'd be awesome.
Councilman Liz, is it possible I can give you back to twenty sixteen? I don't know if I have twenty fifteen and fourteen. I can get you twenty sixteen very confidently.
I'll take eight years. That's perfectly fine.
Thank you very much. So I'll give you twenty sixteen budget to actuals for revenue for general fund. Done. Okay, with that, we'll jump into the expense side of the general fund. And we'll start off with personnel expenses first. For the fiscal year ending twenty two, we ended up spending ninety three point three percent of the budget that you provided us as a city. Our average from twenty sixteen is ninety three percent. So again, we actually hit a little bit better than target for our average. The largest gap from a percentage missed is you can see on the the screen is the community development. We spent seventy five percent of our budget. And the primary reason for the gap or underspending of the personnel budget was due to the inability to hire within fiscal twenty two is very difficult for them to hire and to the retain the, some of the staff. So that's why you see the less spent amount and for community development. And just to give you a precursor into what you're seeing the next slide, you'll see their operating expenses could be much larger because they had to outsource those still services needed for the permits were approved. So you see their expenses exceeded their budget. Their revenues exceeded their budget, but the personnel was lower. So it kind of all kind of works together. But again, our largest variance was community development for twenty two. And then also from a dollar wise standpoint, they had the largest variance of one point one million, quote unquote, left on the books. Again, but that money was, you'll see on the next slide, was offset by operating expense needs. And you can see the other departments accordingly, how they performed from a budget to actual standpoint for the personnel expenses.
And then Todd, if I'm not mistaken, our police department had a much larger, better spend this year in this regards than previous years as well.
Robert confirmed they had, this is one of their better performing years, year over year over year. Yes.
Nice job, PD.
Agreed. That will move us into the next reporting group for expenses, which is what we call our operating expenses for the year. We ended up spending one hundred, we ended up spending six point two percent more than what we had budgeted. Our average is, we normally spend eighty nine percent of what's budgeted, but this year we spent a hundred and six. And you can see the outliers right there in community development. Community development again had to continue to approve those commercials, projects that you approve, those birth of multifamily projects that you approved. And we had to outsource those services. We didn't have the staff in house to make this happen. But the good thing is for every operating expense you see here, there's a positive revenue offset to counteract this. So for every dollar that you spend in operating, you actually generate more revenue from our contract. So again, I know it looks scary there, but just know that they also had revenue to offset every single one of those expenses and a profit on each one of those. The admin department left a few, let's see, we left about thirty percent. And that was primarily or about one point two million, six hundred thousand dollars we left on the books. And that was primarily or about 1.2 million, $600,000 we left on the books for a grant that we're still working on, that we carried into 23. And then we had $600,000 in streetlight projects that we were not able to complete that we carried into 23 as well. So the 1.2 million that you see gapped, we did carry into 23 to get those projects completed. And then you'll see that parks department did overspend. And that's primarily because in fiscal 23, we did not have a budget for the golf course nor the pool. We absorbed those costs fiscal 23 is the first year that we as a city established a budget. So they did go over budget, but it's because I did not create a budget for them in 23. That should look much better next year for fiscal 24. Again, for those expenses, you also have offsetting revenues. Those are the operating expenses, then our third and final expense category that we report to you on annual basis is capital. For the fiscal year 22, we did spend 29.9% of the budget that you provided us for the 12 months. Of the remaining differences, which equals 39 million. So we did not spend 39 million that you allocated to us. We carried 38 of it into 23. So you got Discovery Park, you've got two fire stations, you've got a police precinct, you've got other multiple projects. So I can tell you of the not unspent 39 million, we asked to carry 38 of it. So get done in fiscal 23. So by the end of fiscal 23, the general fund should spend about, well, maybe not 23, maybe 23 and 24, $55 million for the projects that you've allocated to us. The team members, the project managers, they need a little bit more time to get those dollars spent for you. But we did carry 38 of 39 million forward so we can complete those projects at the golf course, at the parks and the fire stations. So that is capital. So in general, or in summary, sorry, the general fund, again, we talked about revenues 12% higher. Good problem to have. All your expenses, you can see 93% of personnel under budget. Operating, we did go a little over budget because of the golf course, the pool and the community development, and then capital at 30%. So again, all good problems to have for the general fund from a spending compared to budget. So the question is, what did this do to our financial position for the fiscal year ending 930 2022? The general fund added $2.9 million to the fund balance. The impact fee fund actually used up 4 million, the community development department added 3.6 capital improvement fund used up 1.8 public safety about used up about 10,000. The grant fund added 1,000 and the general fund, all the non-funds before that added $5 million. We put that all together, that is a net increase to the general funds fund balance of 2.9 million. So the question is, what does your fund balance look like now? The city of Meridian's fund balance, as will be reported next month in the auto report will have $108 million in their general fund fund balance, which is an increase of 2.9 million dollars as displayed. Of the 108 million, 3.8 million is restricted. That is for prepayments, some other things we've already committed to inventory, we can't touch those. We have $22 million associated to restricted to the impact fee funds. So we can't touch those for those. Those are identified for the impact fee funds. We have $22.7 million allocated to the capital projects and public safety fund dollars. So those are already committed to those projects. The assigned is 32.9 million. So those dollars are all assigned from a capital improvement project plan from our CFP modeling. So again, we've already allocated or kind of earmarked projects that those dollars are used for. You take all those numbers and leaves you $1.3 million unassigned that of the 108 million we've already accounted for. All but 1.3 million dollars for the general fund. So that is the impact for the, those are the results of fiscal 22 and how they impact the general fund fund balance. Oops, or fiscal 22. Any questions on general fund results fiscal year 22? Again, we'll do the exact same thing for enterprise fund next. And if no questions, again, feel free to send us an email. We'll get you answers to the 22 results. And then the auditor will provide the 22 auto report in 30 days.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Counselor Pearl.
So Todd, you had said that the offset, the additional approximately 15% that was spent by parks was because of the pool and the golf course expenses, but the revenues offset that. So are you talking about total costs and revenues for the general fund? Are you saying that there specifically were revenues by those two recreation entities that offset that 15% in parks? I was under the impression that there was not that much excessive excess revenue that came in for those two entities, to to recreation facilities.
You're correct, Jessica, that the increase in expenses was a direct result of the golf course and the pool. You're correct there. There were revenues that did offset that, but you're corrected that the statement of 100% of coverage that was not made. So yeah, you are correct on both statements. With that, we'll go into our next major reporting fund, which is the enterprise fund. I guess for results ending 930 2022 for the 12 months prior. I will look at revenues first. So for the entire fiscal year for fiscal 22, we ended up 5% off target. So we ended up at 105.5%. So we missed the target by 5% for the entire enterprise fund. The most important revenue sources on these, I believe, are the water and sewer sales. And you can see we missed those target lines by 1 to 2%. So we're very happy with those. The two outliers you'll see are going to be assessment and assessment, which is not a surprise to us. We talked about impact fees and development fees. Again, those are all based on permits. We've already kind of talked about multifamily and commercial, so we're not surprised that you exceeded our conservative numbers. So again, those are two results of the outliers, direct impact from your or not your, but the direct impact from the decisions for multifamily and commercial. Again, we always want to protect our most important revenue sources, which are water sales and sewer sales. And again, they're very strong and healthy at the moment. Revenues are complete, so we'll look at expenses, we'll report personnel operating in capital, just like we did with the general fund. So the first category of operating that we look at is personnel. For the entire fiscal year 22, we ended up spending 87.2% of what you budgeted us for fiscal 22. Our average for enterprise fund is 89.8. So a little bit lower than our normal average since 2016 that we've been tracking this data for. And then you can see the, again, they're all pretty, pretty much average at 87, 88%. And the primary reason for the underspending is due to the staffing. Again, you'll see this as a common statement. We had vacancies, we still have vacancies. We're managing the vacancies the best we can. We're trying to hire as often, as fast as we can. But 22 just presented some challenges unique to itself. So you'll see that I would say the answer for all four of those reporting departments is vacancies led to the underspending of the personnel budgets present provided to us for fiscal 22. The next major reporting group is operating. For the fiscal year 22 ended, we spent 85.8% of what you provided us from a budget. Our average for the enterprise fund is 81.2%. So we performed better than we have in the past. Again, the averages are based on data collected since 2016. So as you can see, the largest department with the primary or largest gap for this data is going to be the water department at 14.1 at $570,000. And that was primarily for the, let's see what we got. I believe that was for the water meters and consulting projects. And then the largest gap percentage is for the public works department, you can see at 32.1. And they left $300,000 on the table with 264,000 of those $300,000 being requested to be carried forward. Again, ongoing consulting projects that need more than 12 months to complete. Other than that, again, the operating expense for the enterprise fund was, again, what we would deem as solid. The last reporting group is capital, capital expenditures for fiscal year 22. Enterprise fund spent 34.3% of the budget that you provided them for fiscal 22. From a value standpoint, that's $30 million left unspent, but they did request 29 million of the 30 million to be carried into 23 to continue the projects so that they can complete those in fiscal 23 and 24. So hopefully by the end of 24, you'll see that they have, they will have spent 44 of the $45 million that they requested from you in fiscal 22. So with that enterprise fund in summary. Revenues were off by 5% on the good side. Personnel operating capital, you can see we're off on the good side again, underspent under budget with the explanations of why we were under budget on those particular three reporting groups. And that leads to the question, what did that do to the fund balance of the enterprise fund? When you put it all together, we added 11.1 million dollars to the enterprise fund balance. Again, majority of that is going to be requested to be carried into fiscal 23. So it is already in theory spent with the projects that we're moving forward with. And you can see the reporting groups, how they impacted the enterprise fund fund balance of 11 million. When you add those four numbers up, that's what you I guess get to for 11 million. So of that 11 million, what did that do to the impact, sorry, not impact funds, our enterprise fund? Fiscal year ending 930 2022, your enterprise fund is now $96 million. Of the $96 million, we have 75.5 million assigned. So that means we've got projects planned for it. We've got projects ready to move. So of that, we are in leaving about 16 million for assigned for reserves. And then we have 4.8 unassigned. So if you add up the 75 for assigned projects that we know that are moving forward and then 16 million for reserves. And that leaves you about 4.8 unassigned fund balance dollars for the enterprise fund. Now with that, I believe that's the summary for the enterprise fund. I'm happy to answer any questions on the results of fiscal year 2022 enterprise fund.
Counsel, any questions?
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and jump into the impact fee fund. So for fiscal year 2022 ending, our revenues ended 6.4% higher than what we projected. Again, the growth of the permitting outpaced our projections. Again, we will continue to adjust our projections based on results and what we believe will be approved. I will go through fire, parks and police independently, just so you can see the results of each fund. So the fire department ended the year with 34% more revenue than what we projected. Again, based on the commercial and the multifamily. And then the fire department spent 37% of their fund balance. Again, as you know, they're building two fire stations right now. Next year will be a different story. We'll have a much higher number spent because by then it should be majority of that project, those two projects should be complete. That will get us to the next department that we report on, that is the parks department. Again, they came in a little bit under budget from a revenue standpoint. They don't get to charge for commercial, which is a large function of why you see the parks and or fire and police, you'll see the revenues higher. They don't get to collect revenues from the commercial activity. So again, we missed their target line just by a little bit. Again, we'll continue to tweak our projection so we can get closer to 100%. But they did underspend their budgets. They spent 43% of their budget and that's primarily for Discovery Park, which you, as you know, is still in process. So in 2023, you'll see probably a larger spent for 23. And then the last department we collect impact fees for is the police department. Again, revenues exceeded our projections. And then their budget for capital, as you know, precinct is currently being worked on. So in 2023, you should see a larger spent results for that one, which is which gets us to the final results of the impact fee fund. We ended the year 6% higher in budget for revenues, but we only spent 39% of the capital, which was all which will be carried forward into 23, which will be spent mostly in 23 and 24. So what did that do to the impact fee fund in general? We used $4.1 million of the impact fee fund, which is great. Again, we're a save before you spend agency, just like the enterprise fund, general fund, impact fees, the same way. We save it before we spend. So we're finally drawing down on those fund balances that we've been saving for, no different than the enterprise fund does and no different than the general fund does. We save it so we don't borrow. And so that's why you see a negative on that position for the impact fees. This is exactly what we want to see happen on the impact fee fund. So those are the three, well, the general fund, enterprise fund and the impact fee fund. Those are what we have to by ordinance present to you. So again, presented those three particular things to you. The next quarterly meeting, again, I will be presenting to you more in a demographic standpoint. And it won't be a presentation from here. I'll just email you the results. And then with that, I stand for more questions if you have them.
Thank you. Counsel, additional questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Overton.
Todd, once again, fantastic review of our city's financials, how healthy the city's going. And kudos to your staff for you guys putting together such a detailed list of everything and explaining in such detail the differences that we see. So we're not just looking at a graph trying to figure it out ourselves. Excellent job. I appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it, John. Again, you guys start, you guys give us the budget and it's our job to make sure we're accountable to you and the citizens. And that's our job. Again, I would, I would agree with you, John, that the city is in very strong financial condition. Robert and I have been working together for 15 years and I can still stand in front of you, Robert, right now, say the city is debt free. It's pretty amazing that we're an outlier in the United States of America that we are still debt free. Robert and I still have a plan for a 10-year plan to stay debt free. Again, we'll have discussions each year, but the city is in a very healthy position. Something to be proud of as you as counsel, you give us these dollars to spend and then your directors and Robert spend it. So again, we're happy to present. This is a great, I have, I enjoy standing up here and saying, yes, you're in a great position, John.
Um, yeah, and it's a question that Councilman Cavanagh, I think, had as well, but I don't think he was able to join us. And I think, but it just a general question, as we look for the budgeting process this year, kind of what can we expect? You know, in terms of the process, when should we receive our budget books? Do we have a different format? And I realize that's not the exact topic of this presentation, but I just think it would be good to get kind of an overview either now or in a follow-up.
Fair question, Liz. We were happy to present to you the budget calendar. We'll email you the calendar with all the due dates. It will hold your hand through when we expect communications from our directors, from mayor, from council. Any inputs that you would like to contribute to the development of the 24 budgets. You will receive the budget book closer in the month of May. We have provided you and all employees here at the city of Meridian access to the budget in detail. If we are software solution called Questica, we're happy to provide any training to any of our employees, to you council members, to allow you to be informed and empowered to be able to research any of the budget dollars that we are going to present to you in the month of May with the mayor's budget proposal. But no, we'll get a mayor, another budget book, another budget calendar out to the council so they can see the deadlines and due dates of when we would like to have information presented by you council and or the directors to Robert for consideration for the 24 budget development. Would love the input.
Thanks for sending. Appreciate.
Yep, thank you.
And I'll just say that for some of us, that starts on Friday.
Yes, it does.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you, Todd. And then again, thank you to the whole finance department for all the work on helping and keep this all in the black. Because that's where we prefer to be.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the work session.
Motion to adjourn on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those they, you guys have it, we're adjourned and we'll see you back here at six o'clock.
See you then. See you then.
Council will call this main order for the record. It is February 21st, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We'll begin tonight's regular City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Sure.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time is the Pledge of Allegiance. So we all please rise and join us in the pledge. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, say by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. You guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Ms. Cork, do we have anyone to sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we will move on to action items. First item up is a public hearing for Franklin annexation. H 2022 dash zero zero nine zero. We will open this public hearing with staff comments. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Item on the agenda tonight is the Franklin annexation. Application before you is for annexation of 2.53 acres of land currently zoned R2 in Ada County. And it's located at 2975 East Franklin Avenue. A little history on this particular site. In 2009, the city did process a comprehensive plan map amendment to change the future land use to commercial on the site. It was originally intended to develop with the property to the, to the west of it, the jump time piece. But at, at the time that it came through, it was conceptual in nature. And then the jump time, the applicant that owned the jump time properly actually had plans to develop that as an office park and a commercial node and did not move forward with that in 2015. That plan was changed. And so now we're here tonight and seeing this in for this applicant as well. I would mention to you that a concept plan was submitted and there are any end users at this point in time. So that again, that comprehensive plan designation is commercial and the applicant is requesting a CC zoning district consistent with that property to the west. There are existing structures on the subject property that will be removed upon development. And currently there are two curb cuts to the property that one will be closed. And then one will be widened or improved when they actually have development proposed. That will align with Olson Street across on Franklin Avenue. Had a chance to look at the ACHD staff report before I came tonight and wanted to let you know that ACHD didn't technically say it was approved, but they did say that they'll look at that when there's actual development proposed. But in theory, talking with the applicant, this is a safer situation to have this curb cut put in this location. Because it's farther away from the intersection of Franklin and Eagle and also aligns with the public street across Franklin Road. So, and then as part of their application submitter, when they go to develop the site, they will have to reciprocate cross access with the jump time property to their west. That was required with jump time and that agreement has been reciprocated to this property. So hopefully we'll have both of those properties sharing an access and using each other's parking lot for cross access for safer situation to the adjacent roadways. So here's the conceptual development plan that the applicant is proposing. You can see there's two pad sites. One is approximately 3,300 square feet with a drive through. I would mention to the council that the drive through is not approved. If, if one is proposed for this site, they will have to come back through a conditional use permit and go through that process with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then the second pad side on the south boundary is a 12,400 square foot potentially office retail use in the future. Again, no end users. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was discussed that the design of this concept was brought up, why the building was oriented the way it was. And it was to provide that compatibility with the, the adjacent residences. And that's why you see it oriented north, south, and then the parking up along some of the existing county residents as well. And then also commission was concerned, some of the residents came and testified and they were concerned about landscaping and fencing along the south boundary and the location of this trash enclosure here, if you can see my cursor. So a lot of that came about, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend that this trash enclosure get located to a more central location. They felt that the building was in a correct orientation. And as they go through the development process with the city, the code does require that the applicant construct a 25 foot landscape buffer adjacent to any residential uses. So that's, that's important to note here. And we'll look at that at the time of certificate of zoning compliance and design review approval. If the applicant successful with their annexation and executes the development, the development agreement with the city. Also mentioned to the council that we, when we prepped with the applicant, we did entertain a potential cross access with the yellow property to the east. After looking at the existing site constraints, there's a tile canal, the close proximity of that access point to Eagle Road, and then just where that DCL lane starts in, in front of that access point. We felt it wasn't a safe situation that it was better to offer up the access on the west boundary here rather than getting cross access in this location here. But I would like to commend the applicant, at least they went back to the drawing board and made sure that we could at least get pedestrian connectivity to that facility and to that LO parking, which are to that LO development, which is in compliance with the code as well. So again, that will happen when actually lot development is proposed. So I would let you also know that the commission did recommend approval at their January 19th hearing. Tamara Thompson testified in favor of the application. Again, there was adjacent neighbors that were concerned about compatibility, just landscaping, fencing and noise from the trash enclosure. Commission does want the applicant to continue to work with those residents to make sure there's adequate mitigation measures. And they'll do that when they go through the process with certificate of zoning compliance and design review. As I mentioned to you, commission did recommend two new DA provisions as part of the recommendation. One, commission had asked staff at the planning and zoning commission what the restrictions of height were on the adjacent development to the west. So the jump time building itself was restricted to 35 feet. And so to ensure that compatibility and be consistent with that approval, that was one recommendation that the planning and zoning commission brought forward tonight is that this 12,600 square foot building be limited to 35 feet in height. And then, as I mentioned to you, relocation of that trash enclosure to a more central location away from the residence. So we anticipate something in here, potentially the applicant can look at just having one central dumpster location for both tenants. May not need both of them, but they'll continue to work with Republic Services when they finalize the exact location of that. With that, Steph, there are no outstanding issue with you and staff and planning and zoning commission. Again, I've recommended approval and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay, or the applicant can like to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Tamara Thompson. I'm with the land group at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. Bill covered everything really well. He always does, but I will just go through a quick little overview. Again, the property is approximately 650 feet to the west of Eagle Road on the south side of Franklin. It consists of one parcel that's 2.53 acres that's currently used as a residence. That residence would be removed with redevelopment. The parcel does have a future land use designation of commercial. And we are proposing a CC zone, a community commercial, which is consistent with that future land use designation. And it is the same as what the jump time is to, to the west. And then to the immediate east is an LO on that hard corner of Eagle and Franklin. The main access point or the only access point to this property would be realigned with across from Olson, but that would not be a public street. Olson's a public street. It would just be a drive access to it and then cross access to the west to, and I'll show you where that is one here. Jumping around, but there is a recorded document that the jump time did that has that cross access just to the south of where their vacant pad is. So we would provide that access on our side. The the properties to the south and a little bit to the east are the R2 zone properties. Those are in the county. When we had our neighborhood meeting with them, our, our concept plan looked different than, than what you see today. And we did make some changes based on comments from the neighbors. And mainly we did have that, the, the, the southern boundary covered with, with the building. And they asked us to move that so that they would still have some view corridors there. And then this is our concept plan. I colored it in on the, on the landscape setbacks. I think on that southern boundary, those need to be pulled up a little bit, but we will comply with the 25 foot landscape setbacks. And we are showing a concept right now with two phases. The phase on the north side will be the first phase. And all of the street frontage improvements will go in with phase one. And that pedestrian connection to the LO will go in at that time and the cross access to the west. The second phase then is the southern one. And we will work with staff and the neighbors on relocating that trash enclosure. That won't be, won't be an issue and we are fine with the 35 foot height restriction. We've read the staff report and agree with staff's analysis and recommended conditions of approval. And we respectfully request your approval tonight and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel questions for the applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Hi, Tamara. Good to see you. Um, question about the parking. So I was trying to understand the calculations. It looks like there was a calculation per office and then there was also a calculation for restaurant use both in phase two. So is that, help me understand why there's almost double the parking of what is required. That I'm not, I wasn't the, I wasn't the understanding if this 12,000 square foot building is intended for office use or you're not sure what's going in there yet, like it may be a restaurant user. And that's the reason it was calculated this way, or maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro. Good question, and I did not do a good job of explaining that. So the office to the immediate east, where we have the, the pedestrian connection. They are having some issues with their parking. And so they have asked to lease some parking spaces on this side. So we are overparked to accommodate some parking for, for that, for that, for that office to the east.
Also any additional questions for the applicant? Tamara, just help me understand something with the cross access over jump time. On the aerial, it looks like they have, it's, and there's their parking, like where they have a barrier for parking.
So, Mr. Mayor, it, it does look like that. And so I'm not sure if that is a city code compliance thing or how, how that is going to get rectified. There is a cross access, a recorded cross access easement at that location. But they have filled it in with landscaping at this point. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure how that works on their side. Our side will go right up to the property line.
Mr. Parsons, do we have a way to rectify something that someone builds on their property that may prevent a cars from actually using will be a cross access?
Mayor, members of the council, like, I think we're pretty solid in, in the development agreement and that recorded easement. I know when the applicant met with staff probably back in 15 or so, when we started this process, he asked if he could put that in just because he didn't want to have and just bare dirt. And just bare dirt. So I think if long as the applicant reaches out to that property owner. And let let them know that they're ready to get that reciprocated. I think the DA, what we have in place and what's recorded, it should allow the applicant to. Remove that parking and landscaping and make that happen. I can tell you that this site is overparked per city standard, so the cities. The city is not concerned with the loss of. Three or four parking stalls there. And we do anticipate additional development. On that front pad as well. Yeah, we'll also use that access point. So it's it is going away at some point.
I would assume it would not just be those three or four, it'd be what looks like that entire row that is. I mean, it appears as if though that is parking. In that location, but I don't know how you would develop the site and leave it anyways. I just want to make sure there's a way to. Rectify a cross access to, so it's actually utilized. Going that it's not part of this applicant's issues. But if the cross access was not. Going to be functional. Then just begs the question, that's all.
Yep, mayor, council, like we do have a copy of the recorded easement and it's recorded against the property and Tamara mentioned it as well. She has the same thing. So I think we're in pretty good standing.
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Cork, do we have anybody that signed up to write testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do. We had online Nancy Buckley. I don't have anyone online though, and I don't. Think she's here. So the others, Eric Royce, or I may be reading that wrong. Is there Eric here?
If you'd like to come forward. No, no comment. Yeah, you want to come up and speak, you can, but otherwise they can't have you speaking because Dean can't put it on the record. All right, here he comes. You can just say your name and address for the record, then you can say whatever a little or nothing that you want to do.
My name's Eric Royer. My address is thirty sixty.
Can you get closer to the mic?
My name's Eric Royer. My address is thirty sixty four East Springwood. I'm a property to the west, I assume. East, correct, right there. I'm here just to. I have no problems with what they're doing. My biggest concern, even at the last meeting, was I would like to have some sort of barrier between residential, commercial. My back window is on the back.
Sir, can you speak up? I can't hear you.
My, uh, my house, my bedroom, back bedroom is. On the back corner of my home, my my worry is having a fence put up so that we can. Keep the light from the parking lot. Shining in my backyard every time a car comes in. This is going to be a parking and I'm sure jump time will take advantage of it. I'm just here just to make sure that I see what's all going on and. That's my concern.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Eric, real quick, so you you're wanting the fence put up there? For sure. And then possibly some trees for landscaping screening.
In my backyard, I have some trees. But my worry is I'd like a barrier of some sort so that every time a car comes in, it doesn't shine in my. Bedroom, a living room, my dining room. I hope you could appreciate that, you know, just. They're going commercial, I'm residential. I just want to have my privacy. That that's all.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cork, anybody else sign up in advance?
Mr. Mayor, that was everyone.
Okay, if there's anybody present who would like to provide testimony on this item, like to come forward at this time. And there's nobody online. So with that, I'll invite the applicant up for any final comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tamara Thompson again. Regarding the. Barrier, there there is going to be that twenty five foot landscape setback and we'll be very mindful. The land group will be doing the landscape plan on that and will be very mindful of. Car headlights and make sure that we're we're landscaping appropriately for those. And with that, I'll. Again, ask for your approval tonight and stand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Tamara, so there's no fencing or is there already existing fencing in the neighborhood and you're just going to be landscaping in that twenty five foot area? That property to the east?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. Most of the properties have existing fencing already. So what we've discussed with them is just enhanced landscaping.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
But you said most of the properties, I mean, it looks like there are. Four properties that border this property. So. The gentleman that just spoke to us to the east, does he have an existing fence? I guess I'm I'm kind of struggling with why you're not putting a fence in, to be perfectly frank.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, we did look at that. I have some. It's been a while since I was out there, so I don't recall, but I do have some photos I could pull up for you of what of what the area looks like. I believe everyone has. Fencing already and and so in our neighborhood meeting and what we've discussed with them. Since after the planning and zoning hearing is is landscaping.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think we're going to have to run this down more. So if. It's a little bit out of order to have a member of the public come back up and testify at this point, but if he wants to testify as to the existing conditions on his property and what he's. Comfortable committing to going forward, or if you want to pull up the photos. But I I personally think that if there is not a fence, that you should put up a fence.
Okay, so with the with the individual testified to say he's got a four foot chain link fence.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Right. And so his point is that the fence that he has on his property is not adequate. To block the headlights and so we're relying on. The landscaping and birmingham to block that, but. I guess Tamara, I I'd like to understand if you guys are open to putting up a. More solid fence or how you're going to ensure that. All the headlights are blocked.
Mayor, members of the council. Just for context, I I did testify at the planning and zoning commission that the council did require fencing. Jump time to put in six foot fencing. Along the back of their property in this location here. So that's something that was discussed to to match the existing neighborhood. Now the code. Doesn't require fencing. The code requires dense landscaping to Tamara's point. So you, there's multiple ways to get there, but. Fencing and landscaping is one way, Birmingham and landscaping is another way, but. Again, just want to be transparent on the record that that was a DA provision with the jump time property.
Tamara, do we just come up and?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tamara Thompson again. I've talked to my client and areas, so many of them do have solid fencing. I I can, I have some photos, Bill, if we want to pull them up of existing conditions. But the we, my client is is agreeable to putting up solid fence if it's chain link. It just comes to the, it always gets confusing because when you have multiple neighbors, some of them want to keep their fence. What do you, do you put up? Two fences with. A little space in between, you know, it it always gets and everybody wants something different. So we had agreed upon a landscape, enhanced landscaping in those areas. But if we need to do a solid fence or add slats to something that's existing, we we're open to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Typically, the HOA steps in and they decide for the. For all the homeowners, what it should be so you don't run into that problem typically that we've come across that we work with and. I remember when the Walmart went in on Franklin Road. Or the homeowners association came in and worked with the developer on that and you reached an agreement because, because yeah, the homeowners may not agree on things like that, but. In this case, Eric's, you know, Mr. Royer's come in and. Has a sizable chunk because of the the wedge shape that his property is. There's quite a bit of land right along there that. That he has and certainly a chain link fence. Isn't suitable for that and and enhanced landscaping is good, but at the same time, if some of the bushes and whatnot are are deciduous. And in the winter time they fall, you know, you have have those types of situations that you. That you meet with. So I I think in this case where there is that chain link fence on his property certainly needs to have a six foot fence that I think. You and the applicant, you as applicant and the homeowner could. Reach agreement on what that would be. If the others have fences already, they're six foot. Then that's up to them. I mean, that's they've got what. Would be put in over here, so I I don't see a need to go in and say it all has to be the same. It's just in this case, he's taken the time and effort to come and has a concern and I think we can. We can add that to the to the condition if you are. Agree with that. So it sounds like you you're willing to do something for that situation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, that my my client is agreeable to that.
Counsel, any additional questions? Councilman Morton.
No, Mr. Mayor, just to comment, I agree with, I'm glad that that was brought up. I thought six foot vinyl fence makes sense. Along that property, at least. That large single property to the east. We know what the issue is going to be, so I appreciate the applicant being willing to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Having extreme knowledge of Green Hills Estates when it was first started being developed in nineteen seventy seven. I can tell you there was no active HOA in that entire development and fences ran the gamut of what was allowed. So finding everybody putting in the same fence is probably. Not what you're going to see. And I think if you put up a solid fence where he's got a. A non-solid fence now to make him happy and move your development forward, I think that's the right decision.
All right, thank you. Counsel, what's your. Direction at this point, close the public hearing, continue the conversation?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
To make sure we're all on the same page, you know, I'm prepared to make the motion and whatnot, but. This is just for the Royer property. I I suspect it sounds like the others have six foot fences and and. He does have a chain link that's four foot and I do think we need to. You know, do something for that that property there to. Since commercials coming in and typically when your property is impacted by someone else doing the development, they they pay for that expense. As it should be. So I I'm fine with doing it just on that property. And when you look at his house, how close it is to the property line. It's it's way closer than anybody else's house, especially to the other applicant or homeowner to the east that has that little. Very tip that that touches there. So. So that's that's the direction I'm going with with the motion I'd be making if folks are in or. Unless they have other 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 issues. To discuss. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we close the public hearing on item H twenty twenty two dash zero zero nine zero.
If a motion is second to close the public hearing, is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor seeing that by saying I.
I. I.
Opposed, nay. Guys have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H twenty twenty two dash zero zero nine zero. As presented the staff report for the date of February twenty first, twenty twenty three. And to include the staff and commission changes of the thirty five height limitation on the building. As noted in the report and the trash, southeastern trash enclosure being moved. And also to add another provision that would include installing a six foot fence. Along the eastern boundary of the Royer property that has been identified on the record this evening.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I just want to mention before we vote that I agree with my fellow counsel. Thank you for all the great comments and points that were brought up and. And Council President Hoagland, absolutely, there's potential for winter time to really. Affect that landscaping, but also I get to see dense enough landscaping that would. You know, that would provide. A shield against headlights anywhere within the first ten or fifteen years of a project. So. Unless you have the trees really close together, I don't think that it's going to act. In place of a fence. So I am fully in agreement with my fellow counsel that that should be your requirement of the DA.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, council, sorry. Just one clarification is. Council's preference to ask for a vinyl fence or just six foot. Solid fence. Any preference on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I I would think the applicant and the homeowner can work that out. I mean, vinyl fences are usually typical, but I I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary for that. That I I think the homeowner would find that acceptable to have violent fans. So with the agreement of the second, I would amend it to include the six foot vinyl fence.
Second agrees.
Okay. First, the second agree. Any further discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
I.
Overton.
I.
Pro.
I.
Borden.
I.
Hoagland.
I. All eyes, motion carries. The item is great too. Counsel, anything on our future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn on favor seen by by saying I.